So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion except claims presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review claims? And if so, do I have a motion?
Make the motion except claims presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. And finally payroll. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review payroll? And if so, do I have a motion?
I make the motion except payrolls presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. And then reports, we have weights and measures monthly report, the treasurer's monthly report, and the clerk's, Henry County Clerk's monthly report. Do I have a motion to accept these reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Okay, so the first thing we have is a food and beverage claim for the beautify Knightstown project number forty-five. It's a nine-star invoice for thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Do I have a motion to accept the payment of the beautify Knightstown project food and beverage claim?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. We have another food and beverage claim. It's Trojan Lanes Project. And this is with Webb's personal touch in the amount of ten thousand dollars and sixty-eight cents. Do I have a motion to accept this claim for project fifty-five for nineteen seventy-four Trojan Lane for ten thousand, six hundred and eight dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. So Corey's not here, Shonda's not here, Frost and Barrett's not here. So Jeff Plaster, we're gonna move you up to the front. You're welcome. And the microphone, you might need to move closer. You're kind of tall and there you go. And, oh, is it not on?
There we go.
Okay, there you go.
All right. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Jeff Plaster. I'm the Director of the Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission for about the next five weeks. Just to give you a brief update, there is a search committee that is working. They have applications that they're reviewing. And our hope is still that we'll have someone in place to begin work January one. So keep your fingers crossed for me.
Congratulations on being Wayne County Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you. Couple of things I brought tonight just to give you an update on our SEDS process. We've been working on developing a new comprehensive economic development strategy for about eighteen months now. We're real close to be in there. We introduced the draft to the public the first week in October. It's been available through our website and we've sent it out through our board to as many people as we can and are in the process of accepting comments on that. We'll make some final revisions as the group deems necessary based on those comments. And then we hope to get that sent off to the EDA in Chicago by the middle of December. One of the steps that's required is to have the member counties provide letters of support for both the plan and the organization. And you have received a draft of a letter. And then I sent you a copy of the letter that the Wayne County Commissioners approved a week or so ago. If you have any questions about the letter, if you have changes you want to make, you certainly are able to do that. What we're really looking for is endorsement of both the SEDS plan and the region going forward. Any questions on the letter?
We have that on the itinerary for tonight.
Okay.
Yes, it is on the itinerary.
It's all ready.
I originally had you at the same time as this letter, but we moved you because it's kind of far down.
The next thing that I brought was the invoice for dues for two thousand twenty-three. We have, the board has decided that for the last two years, we've been operating at a fifty percent of our original dues structure. When we started the organization, it was set at forty cents per resident. So it's based on a per capita basis. The largest counties pay the most. During COVID, we reduced that to twenty cents per resident. But this year, the board voted because of their desire to replace me. And I've been a part-time employee for the last five years. The replacement hopefully will be a full-time employee and will be able to accelerate the process. So that, on the back of that sheet that has the invoice is some figures on how the invoice numbers are calculated. We originally based everything on two thousand fourteen data from the Census Bureau. We got the two thousand twenty census data at the end of two thousand twenty. And so in two thousand one, we moved to the new revised census numbers. We're still using those census numbers. And for Henry County, we subtract three thousand to take into account the people at the prison who are included as Henry County residents, even though they don't really live here. So we subtracted that three thousand. That left us with a total of eighteen thousand, thirteen dollars and twenty cents for dues for Henry County. My understanding is you're working with the City of Newcastle and Newcastle will pay a part of that and Henry County will pay a part of it. And so that's, it's fine with us. However you want to arrange to pay it is fine. The final thing that I brought you is the appointment forms. I brought one for the commissioners and one for the county council. Each of you have one appointment. The commissioners can appoint a commissioner or any resident of Henry County. The county council must appoint an active, current member of the county council. There also will be appointments available from the five largest municipalities. Newcastle has always had an appointment. Jerry Walden has been their appointment for the last few years. Most of the other towns have not chosen to make an appointment. We continue to try to encourage them to do that. But that's certainly up to the town's option as to whether they have someone who's interested and willing. The board does meet quarterly. For the last five years, we've met on the fourth Thursday of January, April, July, and October over the noon hour. Our partners at SJCA have been good to us and have provided lunch for the board. We meet at the Old Richmond Inn. We have met at the Old Richmond Inn, I should say. As we move to, as I leave my tenure, let's say, and we have a new director, we're gonna look at where is the office gonna be? How are we gonna have the meetings? And make sure that we're doing it as efficiently as possible. The new chairman of the Board of Directors is Dan Parker, who is the Economic Development Director in Fayette County. Dan has some space in his building in Connersville. So depending on where the new director lives, that may be the new home of the organization. So we're looking at all of those to try to make things as efficient as they can be. That's really my report for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did bring Corey Knip with me, who's our broadband coordinator. If you have any questions for Corey, you know, I brought him along just in case because he's so wholesome-looking and, you know, clean-cut, American guy. And so I thought, you know, if I needed to get a smile out of you, all I would need to do is introduce Corey and we could do that.
I think you embarrassed him.
That was my intent.
I think it worked. Well, thank you. Nice to meet you, Corey. Thank you for attending.
Any questions at all?
Said this document looked really good.
Thank you, thank you.
Went through it. I think, I hope they will accept it as that and we will be accepted as members then.
I believe they will, yes. And I really appreciated working with Ed for the last few years. He's been very active and we appreciate that.
We'll probably wait until after the first of the year
Sure.
to make the appointment.
Sure. Just think in terms of the fourth Thursday
Our first meeting is the, is the second Wednesday.
Okay, good.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for your time tonight. I really appreciate Henry County being involved with the region. I think working together, we can accomplish things that we can't do on our own. And I think the last few years has been a good case in point of that. So thank you very much.
Okay, so. Let's come back here. Coroner is not here. Surveyor's not here. Planning's not here. Sheriff McCorkle?
Still working, sir.
All right. Debbie? Jenny's not here. Park? Oh, Joe, I skipped right over you, but I'll come back to you. Sorry. It's because we have you highlighted and it just threw me away. Just, you know.
Yeah, it's on.
I graduated from IU, right? Why do you mumble under his breath? It's okay, you're an IU grad?
I do.
Oh, okay. Yes, Steve.
Good evening, members of the board. First of all, I'd like to thank Joel Harvey for the hard work he did on the issues surrounding the park. And as a result of that, the superintendent will move into the House in the very near future. And we will do a contract with the superintendent that will allow them to use the House. And we'll have, they will also have a salary commission commensurate with the position and salary assigned by Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy when it comes back for, the job description comes back from their analysis.
That still has to be approved by council?
Yes, yes. The superintendent will pay for their electricity. Since there is a meter on that house, we felt that would be. It's always best for people to have some skin in a game in a place they live in. Let's put it that way. She is not adverse to that. Moving on to the shelter house.
I want to step back for a minute to make sure that everybody understands that according to, and Joel can look into this, or Debbie, the auditor, she will have to pay income tax on the fair market value of the house and anything else that is provided.
Right, that is a fringe benefit, taxable fringe benefit, just like a take-home vehicle or any other thing provided by the county.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
That's already been discussed. And we can highlight that in the contract also just to make sure there's no question going forward. The next issue is the shelter house. The engineer, I talked with them because I got the big folder of papers printed out. And they had not done anything about an ADA restroom on the upper level. So I asked them to go back and look at that and put that into the plans somewhere on that upper level because it's needed, no doubt about it. The money they were talking about before the restroom was under actually what we had estimated initially. But my fear is that we'll get into something when we go in to reconstruct it, like the golf cabin, where we had to come up with an extra eleven thousand dollars to repair it from water damage on the west and east sides of that building. There's, we did not think there was any use to button it up with obvious damage because of, we didn't know it at the time. So we asked those folks there to go ahead and give us an estimate. They gave us an estimate eleven thousand. We told them to go ahead. So we can get that done and done right this time around, hopefully. We're looking at using some of the ARP money for that extra repair. I also have a question on the 4H.
I need to circle back, I kind of. Let's circle back around to the shelter. You said it came in below, but then you never said what it came in at and it, you kind of floated on to the golf cabin.
Okay, I thought you all got a copy of that printout because it was addressed to the county commissioners.
Did you like to?
It runs in my mind, it was a little over two hundred thousand dollars, okay? But again, that's plus or minus, I don't know what. And I think in this environment that we're living in now with pricing, I would not want to fall in love with anybody's estimates on prices for anything in construction now. And Steve, you know better than anybody here probably how that fluctuates. I have a question on the 4H buildings. 4H wants to meet and they have a list of repairs that want done. I was under the false impression, I'll be honest, that they took care of their own repairs. That is not true as a result of a nineteen fifty-eight agreement that says the county's gonna fix the buildings. So where would, where would you like? Do you have a preference? You can think about it. But I would like to know what the thought process is because there's nothing that we put in our budget about those buildings that we all know are probably not gonna be here for much longer but do need some attention. We still have the electrical problem that has not been fully addressed. And that's gonna be who knows what. But it's not gonna be cheap, I don't think, to run that line again all the way from the rabbit barn down to the water or wherever it goes near the wash rack. There are some other things they've asked to be done. Some of them I think may have been done before last year. Not sure. But there's also a lot of rotten wood in areas of that barn that they'd like to see replaced. I, I don't, I believe we might be putting good money after bad in that respect. But again, I'm giving you a heads up. There's, there are still problems there. Money's gonna be required to fix them. And the county or the park budget was not configured in a manner to address those costs at the present time at least. And finally, the last thing I have is if there's been any decision on the, with respect to the South Ninety and the control of that property. Is it part of the monument or is it not?
My conclusion would be no, it's not technically part of the monument even if the park is on and off by, de facto, the commissioners have overseen it at various times. And the monument was technically established in nineteen twenty, according to the resolution of this area. Roughly north of County Road, a hundred north.
Yep.
The South Ninety, although there have been memorials and some understanding and there's a reference to transfer jurisdiction, I don't think it's ever formally established that's part of the monument. Title of the property still rests with the commissioners. So my opinion of that would be ultimately decisions on the South Ninety could be made by the commissioners.
Okay, so then, then the board, the question I have then, then the board that was configured for the monument would not be relevant to the South Ninety?
Well, in, I think the commissioners could say the board does not have anything to do with the South Ninety. I think the commissioners could allow the board to, similar to what's been done in the past, make decisions regarding the South Ninety.
Well, the only, the thing that I'm trying to get away from is what we've had for quite a while, well, maybe for twenty years. Before, before the nineteen nineties, there wasn't a whole lot of question about who ran what in the park. So then things started going, well, whatever somebody thought it seemed like. That's not working for us. It creates animosity. It creates problems with budgeting. It creates things that should not be happening with a memorial and/or a park. And that's why I think the board cannot be, cannot be two things. It cannot be two things. That's my thought. It's either the board of the memorial.
I think this discussion is not a discussion for this meeting.
I understand.
I think we're getting way into the weeds. This discussion is not for this meeting, so let's move on to something else.
I'm finished. I just, I just wanted to know what.
All right, thank you.
Situation was.
Joe?
Good evening.
Hi, Joe, how are you?
Better.
Good.
Better.
Yep.
Yeah. Your head saw me down, yeah. We're putting in a federal aid application for a bridge, Bridge one thirty-eight on nine fifty east, north of three fifty south. In that application, it requires a financial commitment letter and it also requires an ADA Title VI commitment letter to NDOT. So what I'm here to do is to ask for your approval and signatures on both of those letters. Now, the financial commitment letter, I was able to get to you earlier today, send it out. Don't be scared by the numbers. They've added money to the numbers for inflation and who knows what's gonna happen down there, okay? I mean, the problem is if you exceed these numbers when we get to the point of designing and building this structure, anything that exceeds these numbers, the county is on the hook for one hundred percent. So we want to make sure these numbers are high enough to cover it.
You want to come in below, but if you come in high, you gotta pay the overage, right?
Right.
Yep.
Want to make sure we're covered.
Okay, so we'll start first with the, Joel, should I read the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. First is the letter for the Henry County's non-discrimination accessibility letter of commitment to NDOT. It's directed to Aaron J. Hall. The Title VI and ADA program, sorry, Roman numerals. Just get me, sometimes I have to stop and think. Program manager at the Indiana Department of Transportation. Ms. Hall, Henry County is submitting this correspondence to NDOT as a good faith representation that it intends to improve its compliance with those non-discrimination accessibility requirements, which are conditions of receiving federal funds. NDOT has reviewed Henry County's compliance efforts and identified the following potential deficiencies. No deficiencies identified. Henry County has enclosed documents and evidence that Henry County is in compliance with the following. Henry County does have an ADA transition plan. Henry County does have a Title VI implementation plan. Copy of the Henry County's ADA transition plan is enclosed and copy of the Henry County's Title VI implementation plan is enclosed. Henry County represents that the above representations are made in good faith and represents its commitment toward achieving compliance with all nondiscrimination and accessibility requirements. Henry County represents that the undersigned individual is authorized to make these commitments on behalf of Henry County and understands that NDOT may monitor Henry County's progress toward achieving its goal as represented herein. This letter of commitment is being submitted by Bobby Plummer, President, Henry County Board of Commissioners. I don't, do I need a motion to do any of that? And then the next letter is the financial commitment letter addressed to Kelly Eaton McCallum. Dear Ms. McCallum, this letter confirms Henry County's financial commitment for our local call, two thousand twenty-eight application for Bridge one thirty-eight, County Road nine fifty east over Simmons Creek. We plan to utilize funding from the cumulative bridge fund, thank you, and other funds if necessary to provide the local match for the project. We anticipate the following expenditures associated with this project. I'm just gonna read the totals for each year. Two thousand twenty-three, and this is divided upon between local, federal and local, with federal being the higher dollar figure. Total of two hundred thousand, five hundred. Two thousand twenty-four, two hundred thousand, five hundred. Two thousand twenty-five, one hundred and five thousand. Two thousand twenty-six, fifty thousand. Two thousand twenty-eight, one point four seven five million. Two thousand twenty-eight, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred for a total of two million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars, with local being four hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars and federal being one point seven seven four million dollars. If you have any questions, please contact Joe Copeland, Henry County Engineer and Highway Superintendent, sincerely, Henry County Board of Commissioners. Again, do I need a motion for this one? Or?
No.
No, okay. So those two, those letters will be signed. Do you have the originals or does Debbie have the originals? Okay, so we'll get those signed and
That's fine.
get them back to you.
No, because it'll be a PDF sent to NDOT. So we're good. I'd like to take them this evening because I'm gonna submit this first thing in the morning, get it finished.
Okay, you can have, Debbie, want him just to, when he emails them, just email you or do you need the originals? Okay. Yeah, so you can just send, when you send those to whomever, just email Debbie a copy so she has for the. Thank you.
Next item. I've had a vendor that has asked that they're willing to carry their price, bid price over from two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three. And it's asphalt materials for liquid asphalt. So, and my understanding, I had correspondence with Joel and Joel said that's, that's okay to be able to do that. All right, I've done it in the past before, but I wanted to come up and make sure you're okay with it. And then I will put the annual bids together that way. I'll take, I'll strike that and then I'll work with Joel to get an agreement.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
Get people to hold their bids.
Next item is.
That's the, the asphalt went up like twenty-seven percent. Is that right, this year?
No, that was, that was the asphalt mix.
Mix, okay.
This is.
Liquid.
Believe it or not, asphalt materials held their price throughout the year for, and actually, I think dropped it just a little for liquid asphalt. I think they, what they do is they get a large quantity in stock and they're able to keep their prices down. But we did not see an increase above the bid price for this particular item.
Sure.
Which is good.
Yeah, that's outstanding.
And we put down this year a little over four hundred thousand gallons of the material. And, and we put down this year a little over 400,000 gallons of the material, so we used a few gallons. They were busy.
I would say, I know Commissioner Dillinger got a phone call this week. I got several phone calls over the last few weeks of people being extremely happy. I think White Estates. You received a phone call. I received several phone calls, nice town area, 800 South, 850 West, pleased as punch.
They did a nice job. I've been down, been down those roads.
And I got flowers and a box of candy.
I didn't. Good for you.
It's always nice to get the phone calls that say, "Thank you." It's nice. They did a great job, because we get a, a lot of, "My road isn't well."
They, they, they worked hard. They, they did an awful lot this year.
So let everybody know.
Oh, yeah. We, we, we had a little bit left that we didn't quite get done, but it was very little. So, so, yeah, we're, I'm extremely happy with what they were able to get done. And weather, we, we went a little further, but weather was really playing a factor, especially when we got down to White Estates, yeah. We do have two more manholes to take care of in that asphalt. We gotta put new castings on, so we'll be doing that. Thank you. Next item, we had the, the person with Verizon that takes care of the county's phones contact us about the idea of putting GPS on our trucks. It's called Verizon Connect, and so we listened, Braden and I listened to a webinar or a Teams meeting last week with the fellow that's in charge of this. I believe he's in Kansas, Missouri or Kansas. But anyway, he, they give us a price for what it would cost. Now, now, not only does, can we detect where those vehicles are, where they have been, what times they were there, but it also, it ties into the vehicles under, what would you call it, the diagnostic hook in? And this will do some diagnostic work. So in other words, if a driver's driving down the road and he gets a, a engine light come on, or some other light comes on, that will contact, give us information and say, "Hey, wait, you got a problem with the truck." So, and it'll try to diagnose to, to its ability what it, what it is, so we'll, our mechanics will have an idea what it is before they even go out there to work on it. So, which, that's, that's a handy thing. But I, I started doing this when I left Hancock in 13, and a lot of it I was wanting was liability. We were having such a hard time, especially with snow. People would call in and say, "You weren't on my road. You've never touched this road," and, and so on, so forth. There's an accident, let's say, and, and were your trucks there on that road? Well, with this, we will know. Were we there and when we were there, or at least in approximate range, tight range, what, what we were there for. So I think it's a good idea to, to put them on the trucks. The, the price they give us was $478 a month, which is less than $6,000 for the year to, to equip all the vehicles. And we will put the, the, the equipment on ourselves with our mechanics.
I think this is a, this is a pretty good thing to have for the trucks. A, you know where they are at all times.
Yeah, you can.
Not that you're wanting to be big brother, but if they break down, you know where they are. Not that you're wanting to be.
Plus the fact that you have a truck that's not moving, and you had a driver, something happened safety-wise. He's gotten out of the truck or got hurt.
Mm-hmm, you'll know.
You and I were talking about that, that to me was also a benefit.
Exactly.
I, I had an incident in Hancock where I had a driver that left the shop with a new person, and he had a heart attack in the truck, passed away. And the poor fellow that was with him didn't know where they were at. They had to search for him to find where that truck was located. So that, yeah, we'll, or if they get out of the truck to try to kick, or debris off the top of the grates on top of the sander, if something should happen and they fall, we know where they're at.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Do we need to make a motion to accept this, Joel?
And you did say you had that in your budget to cover this, right?
Yes, I, we can take it out of local road and street.
So do I have a motion to accept the Verizon Connect quote to provide GPS tracking for the highway vehicles in the total of $478 per month?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Okay. If I could get a sign, well, doesn't have to be now. Debbie can scan it, send it to me. That'd be all right. Thank you. Any questions?
We have an extra copy that we'll sign for your records.
Also, community crossing matching grant fund applications are right around the corner, January. So if there's any roads that you're thinking about, that, I usually look for collectors, major collectors and minor collectors here in the county to, to do. I, I'd like to do Kennard Road from 350 to 450. It's, we did it from 450 to 550. Now I'd like to go another mile north. Thank you, Ed. And I'd like to go another mile north there, but if there's any others that you can think of that you might want to, for us to. Local roads, we're gonna do.
Right.
These would be more major, you know, traffic volumes.
Okay. What's their deadline?
Till the end of December, probably, because I have to get all the specs together and, and go measure it and, and see what we're, what we need to do, especially with pipes too, so. Thank you.
Mr. Van, do you have anything? All right, thank you. Before I move on, I do wanna, I don't know if everybody has seen, Commissioner Dillinger has been spending his time across the street at the Annex Building. December the 2nd, Mr. McGlory will take possession of the building, and we had to move all of our records that we're keeping over into the old jail, which, that went off without a hitch. So he is in the process of, we're taking trash out, getting some of those done. So I want to take the opportunity to thank Steve for all of the hard work that he has put in in organizing this, along with all the department heads, Bill Lechert, Debbie Walker, Jody Brown, Linda Winchester, Steve Rust. I'm trying to name them all, and I won't, I'll miss them all. I just read them off this list that had stuff over there that had to come in and take them out. The Sheriff's Department, he left. The Sheriff's Department, oh, is he back there? The Sheriff's Department.
I'm saying Angela Cox.
Angela Cox.
She got stuff out of there.
The Sheriff's Department provided inmates for us to use at both locations. Who else am I missing?
Kenny Maintenance.
Oh, yes, maintenance, Kenny Johnson, maintenance. Greg Brown. It has gone as smooth as I think as it could have gone with the much stuff that was in that building.
We have to thank Steve the most.
Yes, Steve the most.
Steve did 90% of the work.
Yes, he did.
And we have to thank Sheila for helping mine, and she's been over time there.
And, and thank you, Sheila, who may or may not have come down and helped him on the weekends. So, but yes.
Yes, she's named the building, and she's my mistress, because I spend more time there than I do at home.
But Debbie is right. The, the bulk of the thanks goes to you. You organized it. You've done it. You've worked hard with it. As a matter of fact, he came flying in here at 5:30. Sheila brought him a clean pair of, change of clothes to change, because he's worked over there all day, in the cold, in whatever weather. So thank you. You are appreciated more than you know.
Can I get that in writing?
It's, it's on live stream. It's on live stream. So, anyway.
It's just part of my job.
I know, but thank you so very much. You are appreciated. Okay, the next.
Did you hear that, honey?
Appreciated by me, not you. You don't have to. So next, we have the Pictometry International. This is the contract for pictometry. And this is for the, is this for the aerial pictures for Beacon and all of that? So this is the contract. It is for a total of $190,820, but that's not all paid at once. The project, the, the first project is broken down in projects. So there's first project, year one, two, and three, for $31,803.33 each year. And then same thing with the second project, $31,803.33 for year one, two, and three. So this is what provides all of the beautiful images when you pull up Beacon. And it's a, it's a process for, Joel, you, you've reviewed the contract, and you're good.
Several of the ones in Henry County several years ago.
2017 or somewhere around in there, somewhere around in there. So Debbie, do you have anything else you want to add to it? So with that said, do I have a motion to accept the pictometry contract in the, and I lost my total, in the total of $190,820 over a period of six years, I think? Did I ask? Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the pictometry's agreement.
Second.
Motion by Ed Tarantino, second by Steve Dillinger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Okay, so we're on to appointments. I think we have this wrong. This is the Newcastle.
Yeah, it's Newcastle.
It's Newcastle Library Board. So I have, hi, Linda Brock, who was appointed, appointed by the Commissioners to the Library Board, has a term ending December 31st, 2022. Linda is interested and eligible to serve another four-year term from 1/1/23. It's in tab number five, Ed, if you need it. Linda is wonderful, engaged board member, and I highly support her reappointment. So do I have a motion to accept Linda Brock's appointment to the Newcastle Library Board?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. So we have two appointments to the Franklin Township Advisory Board. So no one had filed to run for these positions prior to the deadline of the elections in 2022. So when that happens, it becomes an appointment by the county commissioners. So Deborah Barnes, the Franklin Township trustee, had sent me the information on two individuals interested in being appointed to that board. One is Sherri Green, and the other one is Bradley Jones to be appointed to that board. Do I need to take these individually, or can I take them together?
I like to take them as a slate.
Take them as a slate. So the only two that have applied for it are Sherri Green and Bradley Jones. So do I have a motion to accept these two individuals to be appointed to the Franklin Township Advisory Board?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Steve Dillinger, second by Ed Tarantino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. And then we have a, Terry McCall has expressed interest. I know Nathan Dunn, I think resigned from the Park Board, August the 12th or 13th, mid-August. We put it out for appointment soon thereafter. Terry McCall has expressed interest. I know Ed spoke with him last week. Am I correct?
Yes.
Last week, and his interest in sitting on the Park Board. Would you like to talk about, anything about the conversation you had with Mr. McCall?
Well, we had a long conversation. Mr. McCall has very good credentials. He's been in the Air Force over 20 years. I believe he's retired from the active duty Air Force, but he resides in Newcastle. He still works for the Air Force, I believe, as a civilian. He has ties to the park. In fact, I think he's related to Mr. Shively, who's one of the founding fathers of the park. And from all the conversation that we had, I think he would be a very good Park Board member.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept Mr. McCall to appoint Mr. McCall to the Memorial Park Board to replace Nathan Dunn?
I'll make a motion to appoint Terry McCall to the Park Board.
Second.
Sorry, my brain stopped for a second. Motion by Ed Tarantino, second by Steve Dillinger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. There are two Park Board positions that are expiring at the end of 2022. This wasn't supposed to be on here, because we'll wait until the new commissioner is seated to open that up for appointments. We've, on down to the EIRPC investment letter. So this is, Mr. Plaster was talking about this in his presentation about the investment letter, and this is the letter, as has been presented, says, "Dear Ms. Bram, this is to Ms. Bram, the Regional Director of the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. Dear Ms. Bram, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana submits to you this request that the Economic Development Administration accept the Indiana Eastern Regional Planning Commission, Inc. as the management entity for the Eastern Indiana Economic Development District. That includes Fayette, Henry, Rush, Randolph, Union, and Wayne Counties. We also ask that the EDA accept the attached Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, CEDS, in parentheses, CEDS, as our action plan for the next five years. It is our intent to also ask for financial support for our ongoing operation upon EDA's acceptance of the CEDS plan. The Board of Commissioners hereby confirm our full support, participation, and membership in the Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, and then the implementation of this CEDS plan upon its acceptance." Do I have a motion to accept this letter to be sent to Ms. Bram?
Motion to accept the letter.
Second.
Motion by Ed Tarantino, second by Steve Dillinger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have fuel bids for the Sheriff's Department, so notice is hereby given that the Board of Commissioners of Henry County will receive sealed bids at the Courthouse Commissioners Office 101 South Main Street, Newcastle, Indiana, for gasoline and diesel fuel for the Office of Henry County Sheriff, Henry County EMS, and the City of Newcastle. The Henry County Board of Commissioners will receive sealed proposals at the Courthouse 101 South Main Street, Newcastle, Indiana, until December the 13th, 2022, at 12:00 p.m. Proposals will be opened, accepted, and awarded at 11:00 a.m. Eastern Time during, Eastern Standard Time during the Henry County Commissioners Meeting on Wednesday, December 14th, 2022, at the Courthouse 101 South Main Street, Newcastle, Indiana, for the calendar year of 2020, should that be the calendar year of 2023? Specifications are available in the Office of the Henry County Commissioners, 101 South Main Street, Newcastle, Indiana. Bids shall be itemized on Indiana State Board of Accounts Form Number 95. No bid bond is required. Additional bid requirements are contained within the specifications. Contracts will be let as part or whole to the lowest responsible bidder upon affidavit of non collusion, which must be submitted with bids, and upon failure to submit such affidavit, such bid will be rejected. The bid will be awarded to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, except that Henry County Commissioners reserve the right to reject any and/or all bids when it is in the best interest of the county and to waive non-material, any error or omission in any bid received." And then the bid specifications will be attached. I don't think anybody wants to sit here and hear me read fuel information, but the specifications will be attached. So those will be accepted until December the 13th, 2022, at noon. We don't need to accept any of that, do we, Joel? It's just information. Okay, so early closure for holiday office parties, and I need to look at my calendar, because I can never remember when anything is. All right, so we're talking the 23rd, is that right, Debbie, on December the 23rd, the Friday before Christmas Eve?
Yeah, we're put on the 23rd.
So it'd be the 22nd? So it'd be the 22nd. Okay, so every year. So it'd be the twenty-second. Okay, so every year, the county has allowed the day before closing for the holidays that each office can close at noon that day, so they can celebrate their office parties and have a celebration with their, their employees. So do I have a motion to allow for early closure at noon for all county offices on December the twenty-second, twenty twenty-two?
I'll make a motion that we allow the early closure for Christmas parties.
Second.
Motion by Ed Tarantino, second by Steve Dellinger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to leave for another engagement, but I'm okay with the rest. All the organs is on.
Okay, thank you. Rescheduling December twenty-eighth Commissioners' Work Session. I think because it's, the just thought was it's at the end of the year, not much is going to be taking place. Instead of having the three o'clock work session, yeah, we have the three o'clock work session, that we just move that until January.
I agree.
Okay, can I have that? Do I have a, do I have a motion?
So moved.
To ca- actually just to cancel the twenty-eighth Commissioners' Work Session. Motion by Steve Dellinger, I will second that. Second by Bobby Plummer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Update on the, or two zero, excuse me, update on the Transition Center. I was talking to Val. I saw Val over the weekend, and last meeting, when I said, well, the sheriff is still storing things in the Transition Center. They're storing things in the Transition Center because they're building a maintenance building at the new jail, and that building has not been built. I left all of that out, and I explained that to Val over the weekend, so I wanted to explain that. So as soon as the maintenance building at the new jail is built, they will be able to move all the stuff that they need into that building, and then we will be able to move forward with that building. So there we go on that one. So this is ordinance number twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-two zero eight. An ordinance defining Henry County, Indiana as an Indiana broadband-ready community. And this is, it's my understanding that we are making, we're starting the procedures. This does, this ordinance does not make us a broadband-ready community.
Yeah, essentially, the ordinance says you're going to work and take the steps to become a broadband-ready community that requires coordination, so.
Offices. Yeah.
To get that accomplished, so this is just making a commitment.
The declaration, that's what we're gonna do. Okay, so I will read this. Whereas Henry County, Indiana finds that broadband internet availability in the county is of critical importance to all people living, visiting, and doing business, both in the county and in the city of Newcastle, Indiana. And whereas the Indiana State Legislature recently created the ability for Indiana communities to be designated as broadband-ready communities through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. And whereas Henry County, Indiana seeks to promote private investment broadband infrastructure. And whereas Henry County, Indiana seeks to be designated as a broadband-ready community pursuant to IC five dash twenty-eight dash twenty-eight point five. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana, as follows. Section one, as used in this chapter, permit means any local permit, license, certificate, approval, registration, or similar form of approval required by policy, administrative rule, regulation, ordinance, or resolution with respect to a project. Section two, as used in this chapter, project means the construction or development of wireline or wireless communication facilities to provide communication services as defined in IC eight dash one dash thirty-two point five dash three in a unit. Section three, Henry County wishes to become a broadband-ready community and shall endeavor to A, appoint a single point of contact for all matters related to a project. B, establish procedures to allow all forms, applications, and documentation related to a project to be filled or submitted and signed by electronic means. C, review and approve or reject all applications for permit related to a project within ten business days after an application is filed or submitted. D, assure that after an application is approved, any inspections, including any additional necessary approvals related to a project, will occur in a timely and expeditious manner. E, develop a procedure for broadband adoption that complies with Indiana Code five dash twenty-eight dash twenty-eight point five dash eight. Section four, Indiana, Henry County, Indiana shall adopt adequate processes and procedures to implement the provisions of section three. Processes and procedures established, established hereunder may not be, may not do the following. A, require an applicant to designate a final contractor to complete a project. B, impose a fee to review an application or issue a permit for a project. C, impose a seasonal moratorium on the issuance of permits for a project. D, discriminate among communication service providers or utilities with respect to any action described in this section or otherwise related to a project, including granting access to public right-ofways, infrastructure and poles, river and bridge crossings, and any other physical assets owned or controlled by Henry County. E, discriminate among communication service providers with respect to promoting broadband adoption within Henry County. And F, impose a fee on communication service providers to fund promotion of broadband adoption in Henry County. Now therefore be it ordained by Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana. This, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective after passage by the Commissioners of Henry County, adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County this day of November. Do I have a motion to accept the broadband ordinance to start the process to move forward toward becoming broadband-ready?
So moved.
I will second that. Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tar- Ed Tarantino, Bobby Plummer. I don't know who I am. I'm so used to not saying my own name. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. And then lastly, not lastly, but we have ordinance number twenty-two twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-two zero zero nine. An ordinance vacating a public way. Whereas Indiana Code thirty-six dash nine dash two dash five provides that a unit of local government may establish and vacate a public right-ofway. Whereas there is an alley running between the seventeen-hundred block of West Country Club Road and seventeen-hundred block of West Railroad Street. And whereas the alley is not used as a public way or for an ingress and egress. And whereas the alley is not located with any incorp- within any incorporated municipality. And whereas vacating the alley will not impair access to any property or impede the flow of travel within Henry County. And now therefore be ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County that the public, public, following public way is hereby vocated. So we're just reading this for public knowledge, and then we'll have the public hearing.
They don't hear you.
Yep. Then we take action then. The platted alley consisting of approximately point four or five acres, more or less, parcel number zero zero seven dash nine six eight one nine dash zero zero, which runs between the properties commonly known as seventeen forty West Railroad Street, eight sixty-eight South Country Club Road, eight sixty South Country Club Road, seventeen thirteen West Country Club Road, and seventeen twenty Rest- West Railroad Street in Henry County, Indiana. But not those portions of the platted alleyway that run parallel to West Railroad Street or West Country Club Drive. So that is the description of the alleyway that will be vacated. And the par- the reason the parallel sections are not included is because that will imp- could impede the travel. Is that correct?
It looks like the way that's depicted on the map, the portion of that alleyway, what's that parcel, includes part of the right-ofway on the railroad street and.
And Country, West Country Club Road. So it's just the nor- it's just a section that goes north and south, not the section that goes east and west.
I got a question on that. May I ask? So this would be divided when a public hearing comes, and they all come half, and you said no more than five.
It, it, it typically, it typically go, if it's ten feet wide, then five feet go this way, five feet go this way. If it's twelve feet, it's six feet.
And you, the Commissioners, own that. Has that been surveyed? Because my question is, everyone, like I was talking to you earlier, you know, will have to have it surveyed. It would be a lot cheaper for the Commissioners to survey this than everyone else, because the survey's gonna cost these people around nine hundred dollars to survey it.
I, I think it's, oh, it's not legally required to have it surveyed, but if there is an issue, somebody's built the fence too far. That becomes a civil issue.
That's a lot of issues here.
But we're not, we don't require it being ser- no.
No, you're not, but could you do that?
Well, when you do for one, you do for all. And if we survey on this one, then every single other alleyway, and the county just doesn't have the funds to survey every single property of every single vacated alley.
But it would be.
Just say in the packet they get, when they come to request this vacated, the packet tells them if there's any questions that they have to get the survey. We give whoever comes and gets to ask how to vacate an alley, that is part of what, in that packet.
Okay, so they would get the survey up to their land, and then the neighbor will get the survey, and then what's left, and that's, you guys?
Well, I think, and I don't know how the surveyers work, but it's my understanding that the surveyor, so once it's vacated, the surveyor will take the ordinance of all the information of what was surveyed, and they will include that portion into, let's say it's your property. They will include that in the survey.
The surveyor will get this ordinance, and then go look at title work, and look at existing surveys that are out there. And when you ask, has it ever been surveyed properly, in some way it has been surveyed.
Yes.
And then if someone requests a new survey, the surveyor will go out and then, you know, mark locations, that sort of thing.
Okay.
So, I mean, that would be the process, in my experience, that surveyors generally follow. I've, I've had elements, and I'm not a surveyor, so.
Yeah, that's.
This would be something totally different.
Right, because.
But no, we can't, we can't.
Can't have it surveyed. I was trying to stick.
Because we would have to have everything, every time we vacated an alley, we would have set precedent that we have to ser- and, you know, funds are, funds are tied at the county.
I know, I know. They're tied.
Trust me.
For some. So, okay, well, it sounds like we, now, is there any local surveys and surveyors in Henry County?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, there are. So the public hearing will be on the twenty-eighth?
No, actually, public hearing's at the price tonight. No, this is.
Oh, public hearing was tonight. Oh, I guess I didn't realize.
Yeah.
Well, because Gary, or is it Greg, and Jenny, both left.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm here to represent Jenny.
Okay, I mean, we're just vaca- okay. I apologize. I, I misunderstood that, that this was a, that this was, I thought we were doing it the next week. This is the public hearing. So I guess I will call the public hearing to order to vacate this alleyway. Anybody wish to speak on it? Patty, come on.
Yes, I'm wishing to speak. I do not know Jenny McClure's address.
Seventeen twenty.
Okay, but she has been there less than a year, and her neighbor beside her put a fence up, and it was real close to her driveway, which, and he also has a shed there. But the shed was there when she bought the house. She's not questioning the shed. The fence was too, but not the, the new fence for the front of the property. She has talked to Mr. Green and Mr. Rust, and the gentleman said tonight, I asked him if he had a permit, and he was told he didn't have to have a permit.
For the fence?
For the fence, by Mr. Green, because there was one there quite a few years ago before he moved in. He tore it down when he moved in, you know. And he said to let the neighbors know, he would put a flower pot where the fence holes were. And no one had told her that. I feel like, so she's checked on it. It's gonna cost her eight hundred and some dollars for a survey. And Mr., I don't know the gentleman's name, but he said that he's done this numerous times. And he knows he's in the right, he felt like he was in the right, and he would not go into her property, which I feel like her main concern was the front part of the house. She's not gonna ask him to move the shed or anything like that. But if she has to put a lot of money in this, and it will have to go to a civil suit, and she'll have to get an attorney, and we need some help. I think it could have been taken care of if he would have gotten a permit. She would have gone from there.
Also, it's my understanding, if it's a farm fence, he doesn't have to get a permit, but if it's a privacy fence, they're supposed to get.
It's not a privacy fence, but I don't know the difference. It's not a privacy fence.
So he, and he's put this fence in the alleyway?
I feel like it is.
Okay. Well, and it, and Joel, you can correct me if I'm wrong. All we're doing is vacating the alleyway. Even if we didn't vacate the alleyway, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot that the county would do to move any fences.
I mean, short of saying one of establishments or right-of-way, you know, and clearing everything out, pay.
Because the, the valley, the alley that we just vacated out on Brown Road, Kentland Avenue, there were sheds and buildings and fences all built into it. Is that the same thing on here? Or you were talking?
Well, I think they're all on her property. I think as soon as that her property was vacated before she moved in.
When we, when we vacate the alley, then it becomes part of her property.
Gathering, you know, and her question.
It does become a civil.
Yeah, it really did become.
A civil lawsuit, yeah, then the, yeah.
And then her question was, and that would be in the civil part, you know, if they have to move all this stuff, how long would they get and everything? But that would be in the civil. I'm jumping the gun on that, so.
Yeah.
But I just thought if we, we knew where it was, it's on Beacon, but as you said, it's not illegal, even though we're paying him a hundred and ninety thousand.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not used for legal purposes. I mean, it's used for us to look at and stuff, but it's not used for legal describ- you know.
But if you look at it, 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 he's really there.
I've found that the lines on Beacon are not a hundred percent accurate.
Right, they are not, and I understand that, but.
But even, even if they're all, he went all the way to the east side.
He went all the way to her driveway.
He took up the entire evening, whatever that was, because it's definitely right up against her family.
So I appreciate it. I think you need to, you know, give it half and half, just like you said.
And that's what happens.
And then we will take it from there. Will you send her a letter?
I'll get, I'll get ahold of, I'll, I'll get, I'll get ahold of Jenny, and we'll, I don't have the other gentleman that was here that is on the other side, but I know Tom's got his information. I'll get his information and call him. I think those are the only two. There's only a couple.
No, there was four.
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 That's right.
And they ju-
That they got the letter?
Yes, they did. Jenny said they did, but they all don't get along. Well, Mr., the gentleman I spoke to doesn't get along with him, you know. But Jenny does, and Jenny just would like to move the little bit, just.
Right. And who knows, maybe he will once it's, and he will, you know, once it's officially vacant. I don't know. Maybe he will.
Let's hope so.
Yeah.
Let's hope so. But, and then we'll go for there on the civil, civil suit. Just more money. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? With that, I will take a, do I have a motion to accept ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-two to vacate the alleyway as described, as I read previously, because I don't need to read it again. Yeah, he's not saying a word.
So moved.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, I will second it. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by myself. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. And we are on to the last, which is the, we didn't get a resolution number. Can we do that? Can I get a number at the, yeah?
Resolution number is twenty-two twenty-two dash eleven dash twenty-two zero two four.
Oh, it's just not on my form. Sorry, I was. Oh, it's just not on my form. Sorry, I was reading the form. So this is a resolution amending our written expenditure for ARP funding. And the only item that was added, I know we had passed this in the, we've signed the contract, and we passed this in the committee. It just didn't make it into the ARP resolution. I missed it on one of my lists. It's number twenty-seven, the sum of up to fifty thousand dollars for the acquisition of new timekeeping software. So do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
I will second that. Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by myself. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Anybody else have anything else? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you very much. If I can get my tape off. Hey, James, how are you?